Great, I'm going to call to order this work session for October 13th, 2021. And our first agenda item is Ms. Cottle. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So what I'm bringing to you today is really a renewal. We have had the Baby and Me Tobacco Free Program for several years now. And when we originally started it, we, we used some NACO funds to do that. And then the state actually came on board and provided a grant that allowed us to use Baby and Me Tobacco Free state funds. And so we've been doing that and kind of keeping those NACO funds back for just when we needed something extra for this program, or just the situation we are currently in. The state is no longer funding tobacco, Baby and Me Tobacco Free. They are looking to do something different. And so we would like to use those NACO funds and go ahead and use, continue the program for about another year so we can, at a minimum, finish out the people who are already signed onto the program. And that will also give us time to figure out what we might be able to do to replace this. So that is why I'm bringing the, the agreement. Baby and Me Tobacco Free is a proprietary program. And so we have to sign on to that and have agreement to use it. And then we pay them some fees and get the vouchers from them and that kind of thing. So we would be using the NACO money. So it's not a new appropriation or anything like that. It's something we already have. But I am asking you to sign it this year because it is directly with them and we're not going through the state.
Right. Thank you. And Mr. Cockrell, because this is a continued program, we can go ahead and vote on this today. Great. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
This is a great program and I'm glad that we'll be able to keep it going for another year.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I was astounded in quickly reading through the information that you shared with us that you're following up with moms as long as 12 months postpartum. And so that continues to impact the baby's health, not just in utero, but kids in homes with smoker risk have higher rates of asthma and all kinds of other conditions. So I'm really proud that we would do something like this.
Yes, it really is a great program. And I hope that whatever the, the state finds to replace it is similar and provides similar results.
Let's hope they get something together soon. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this particular item. Just raise your hand in the Zoom screen. You'll be limited to three minutes total time. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of the surfs agreement for Baby and Me Tobacco Free Program?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Next, we have, we rearranged our agenda a little bit. Next, we have the Griner Sales Disclosure, Mr. Schilling?
Thank you very much. When we, this relates to a parcel of property that we obtained through the eminent highway right of way and on the Woodyard Vernal Pike area. And so since we purchased this property, we need to file a sales disclosure statement. And so that needs the signature. And there's only one signature line. So my request today for this is that you authorize one of the commissioners to sign this on behalf of the board. And then I guess I would like to add an additional request. We have another piece of property, the Steinsville property that we've dealt with through an ordinance earlier this year. We will need to sign a sales disclosure for that as well. So I would again ask that you designate one of the commissioners to sign that on behalf of the board. That's it.
Right. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Nope. Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Would somebody make a motion? I'd be happy to be the signatory.
Board of Commissioners President Julie Thomas be the signatory on these documents.
Second.
All right, we have motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll?
He may have stepped out, so I can do that for you.
Would you do that, please?
Most certainly. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion passes, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Mr. Evans. There you are. Good afternoon.
Hello. What this is, is an add-on to a contract that you guys actually signed in August. To refresh your memory, in August, I came before you with a fairly substantial contract with Axon Enterprises that replaces all of the sheriff's body cams. It also allows us to start storing the video evidence generated from the body cams in the evidence.com platform, which is owned and run by Axon. We discovered after you guys signed that contract that they forgot to include enough accounts for the public defender to have access to the evidence on evidence.com. It's a whole big, long story that I'm not going to get into. Suffice to say, I was very displeased to discover that they had not included all the charges in this. But, so there was some back and forth. There was some wringing of hands, some wailing and gnashing of teeth. And what used to be for us is the lowest amount that I could get these licenses for. It'll allow the public defender, everyone in their office, to have access to the video evidence that we're saving on evidence.com. And I would ask that one of you sign this quote so that we can move forward with that. Any questions?
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
I can understand your frustration. Thank you for working this out.
So, so this is additional funding that's going to be needed, correct?
Yes, we, we're going to be paying for it in the same place. I mean, it doesn't affect the need for appropriation.
Okay, so, okay, so there's an appropriation for it?
Yes, yeah, that's all been taken care of. It's just you think with a contract that's worth three quarters of a million dollars that they'd include everything the first time, you'd think.
You'd think so, yeah. Now, I appreciate that you worked on this. I don't know if Mr. Cockrell is back, but if he is, I just have a question about, oh, it looks like he is. I have a question about whether or not this is something we can go ahead and approve today. Do we need to ratify it next week?
I think you could certainly approve it today. Whether you wanted to ratify it next week would be your discretion.
Okay. All right. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but ratifying it or not. But if somebody could make a motion, I would appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I don't have the information in front of me.
I don't either. I'll make my effort to do so. It's opening.
Yeah, mine too.
Here we go. There we go. I gotta make sure I have the amount. Do I have the amount? Yes, I do. I do have the, oh, I don't have the amount, okay.
So on, yeah, on the attachment I sent on that first page.
There it is. I see it. 60 months.
And then the full contract amount.
Got it. Thank you. I saw the numbers and I didn't see the total. Okay, good. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve this agreement with Axon Enterprise. And this is for public defender access to software. This is a five-year, 60-month program length at a total cost of $29,188. Right, we have a motion and we have a second. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Axon Enterprises? Enterprise, sorry.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Planning. We have Ms. Kressilis from Planning to talk about ordinance 2021-32. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Okay. So this request, it's REZ-21, REZ-21-2 called the Blackwell Rezone. So this property is located at 4050 West Carmola Drive. This is, the petitioner is Blackwell Contractors represented by Smith Design Group. So this is a request to amend the zoning map from agricultural rural reserve to medium density residential. The property is located in Richland Township, Section 24, and it's currently unplatted. So our comprehensive plan designates this area as designated communities, which means it refers to the Rural Community Plan. So under the Ellisville Rural Community Land Use Plan, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners in 2003, the Ellisville Rural Community Land Plan uses, proposes to enhance existing development, better link corridor areas to adjoining neighborhoods, maintain a discernible edge consisting of low-density, large residential lots, and a few other notes that you can find on page 20 within the packet. So this is kind of outline plan. You can just barely see Carmola, I believe, right here, in an area called Neighborhood Growth. So these are some pictometry and aerial photos of the site. As you can see, it's currently surrounded by other medium density residential housing, surrounded by subdivision on four sides. It is located within the critical watershed that's called Jack's Defeat Creek. The property is mainly buildable with only some slopes that exceed 15% along the edges of the north and east property boundaries. Here are some photos from planning site visit. The home that was existing was removed, I believe, a year or two ago. So it is currently vacant. We can, the right two photos on the top and bottom do show kind of what Carmola Drive is looking like right now. So the petitioner's intent is for future development of a future subdivision of this property, something that would be fairly consistent with the, you know, adjacent zoning and adjacent subdivision, subdivisions that are next door. This is a conceptual design. We've had some feedback during the process so far, you know, concern that this would be really dense. Specifically, a lot of concerns about stormwater in the area. But this, as we review this petition, you know, it's really looking at the rezone, that this is conceptual. And with this petition, you know, the MS Word Coordinator has, has looked it over and has an idea of, you know, the drainage requirements that will be required. So, you know, we don't necessarily, we don't see that reflected here on this concept. But they will be addressed in the future. Another review was also by the Highway Department. So one of the things that Mr. Paul Saturday pointed out, the Highway Department Engineer, was that there are planned Carmo improvements to Carmola Drive that are fairly significant. So within this rezone petition, they've recommended that we secure a temporary right-of-way that will be used for that improvement of Carmola Drive. So in this image, the petition sites highlighted in yellow, we can see this is what the right-of-way will be. It is not currently dedicated. Then there's some temporary right-of-way that's larger than what would normally be secured just for the construction of, like, drink pipes and the road. So the Plan Commission recommended a favorable recommendation to the commissioners with a vote of eight to zero. That was with the requirement that the petitioner submit a written commitment to dedicate that temporary right-of-way to the county for that Carmola Drive improvements. So your packet includes a staff drafted written commitment. We have received an update with their own draft of a written commitment. So this is currently in review. And by the next time, we will have to have this reviewed and approved by legal and highway and then recorded before you would be able to make a vote on this. So we do expect that we'll, we'll have maybe another version of this. I've already gotten feedback from the Highway Engineer where they, you know, asked for some updates to it. So the next time you see this, there will probably be an updated version to even the same version that I have here on the screen. So staff is recommending approval of this rezone based on the findings of fact and subject to that written commitment being approved by legal and highway and recorded with the Monroe County Recorder's Office. Does anybody have any questions?
You're muted, Julie.
Sorry, I have, actually have a question for Mr. Schilling, if he's still on. I wonder if, Mr. Schilling, if you would address the issue of how long we have to approve something and if we don't, it automatically gets approved and whether or not that can come into conflict with waiting on a written commitment. So for example, if the developer does not get this signed and then they wait out the clock, what happens? I mean, I, I don't think that that would be fair to the community.
So I can answer that if you'd like.
David, you might be muted.
Yeah, I just returned.
Okay, so, so we're looking at the Blackwell Rezone on Carmola. And there is, we still don't have a written commitment regarding right-of-way. And that's going to be vital for this because of the stormwater issues in the area. And we do have a limited amount of time in which we can actually hear a petition before it becomes automatically approved. And I would not, I, I was wondering how that works if the petitioner is slow to get this done or if there's a conflict over the agreement, for example, unintentional. What happens to that timeline that we're under for hearing a case?
That, that's statutory. So I guess if they don't, if the petitioner doesn't get you information in a timely fashion, then you could just deny it and then they would have to reapply.
Right. Okay, so I would say, Ms. Kressilis, that you need to pay attention to that, if you would, the dates, the deadlines, and make sure that this gets on our agenda before that deadline. So that if we don't have a document, then we can make a decision without the document if that's the case. Okay, thank you. So let's see, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Well, I know this is an area that has a lot of drainage problems and I am rather concerned about that. Anytime you put in more impervious surfaces, the drainage does get worse. But I guess at this point, we don't know what the plan is, so there's not much to say about it.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, would you please remind me how dense this is going to be on this 2.1, what is it, 2.6 acres?
So just under the acreage of the proposed requested zoning, you would be able to have six lots. Now, there was a lot of discussion, you know, about the stormwater problems that this area had is. And essentially what it, what the stormwater MS Word Coordinator was, was saying was that those issues will have to be addressed if a subdivision is proposed here. You know, so that's going to be, it's going to be very closely examined when a petition comes through if they are actually able to propose this design. I mean, I would imagine that the design that we see is going to be less than six lots just because there's going to be a fairly large need for stormwater and towards the northern side of the property. But just, just based on acreage and zoning, it would be a six lot, six lots maximum.
Thank you. Okay. So if my colleagues have other questions that arise between now and when it shows up on our regular agenda, just please reach out to Ms. Kressilis. And, and she will.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next, we have Mr. Myers.
Hi again, can you hear me?
You sure can.
Okay, let me share my screen here. This is just the packet. So for the formal session, I will have a PowerPoint slide for you all. This is REZ-21-4 or 2021-42, the Hamilton Rezone Request. It's a fairly straightforward rezone request. It's from State Residential 1 to Agricultural Rural Reserve, and it's for 134.5 acres. All right, so coming down here to the summary. It's located at 1300 West Bell Road, which is in Bloomington Township, Section 8, unplatted. Plan has designated as farm and forest. And the reasoning behind the rezone is the petitioner would like to petition for a sliding scale subdivision to subdivide off the existing house in a 2.5-acre tract, 2.5 acres to three acres is what they've said, and keep the remaining, remainder of the property in classified forests and tree plantings. So in order to do the sliding scale subdivision through the subdivision control ordinance, it's only allowed in three distinct zoning districts. That's Agar R, FR, and CR. So being in a state residential one, they're actually not allowed to do the sliding scale subdivision. They could do the minor subdivision, but that creates lots that are as small as 10 acres. So that's not what they want to do. They want to just have a small homestead lot. And then the remainder of the lot, they plan to retain ownership of and not develop actually. They communicated that to the Plan Commission during the regular meeting that they intend to keep most of it, or excuse me, the remainder parcel all in the classified forest designation and the tree plantings. So I'm just going to scroll through here, just get to some high-level points of discussion. Here's the location map, I-69 here, and then West Bell Road just right here. So the home site's actually just right down in this area. And then the remainder of the lot, as I stated before, they intend to keep preserved in a more forested capacity. Zoning RE1 right next door to Agar R as well. You'll see this stream feature that comes through the property. There's actually a large amount of this property in floodplain as well. So we'll see more of that when we get to the slope map. All right, so here's site conditions. So back to the next page. This is all designated floodplain, as you can see. And there's a lot of steep slopes as well, the closer you get to the floodplain. You'll see down here in the bottom, zoom in a bit, if I can. Here we go. There's the home site down here, and they're petitioning to just do about 2.5 acres, three acres, and then the remainder of the property to be preserved, as I've stated. Here's the slope map. As you can see, the red areas are greater than 15%, which are classified as non-buildable area. So in the future, if a new owner or someone were to want to develop this property, they have to keep in mind with the steep slopes as well as the portions of the property that are classified forest with the DNR. They'd have to unclassify those segments. It just requires some paperwork and submitting of materials to the DNR and then go through the building permit process and so, so forth. There would be an access easement that they would create in the sliding scale subdivision petition. And it is also likely that in that sliding scale subdivision petition, they would have to create a cul-de-sac for emergency vehicle turnaround here at the end of West Bell Road, as well as probably petition for a road width waiver, which would put the entire petition to the Plan Commission's decision. And that's because West Bell Road is likely under the required 18 feet for a sliding scale subdivision. All right, so just continuing on here, some aerial photography of the site. Again, you can see the homestead area down here. More photographs. Comprehensive plan, as I stated, it was farm and forest. Here we have the findings, petitioner's letter to keep the remainder in the classified forest and tree plantings and subdivide off that house area. And here's a preliminary rezone drawing. So down here, as you can see, is that potential 2.5-acre tract and then also an access easement as well. Again, all this would come to the Plan Commission due to the fact that it's likely required to have a road width waiver. If, for whatever reason, the road is actually 18 feet, then it would be a plot committee decision. So now I'll take any questions. It's fairly straightforward.
Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Not really. I, it's just kind of exciting to be able to be excited about a rezone.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I would, it's nice to see that something may stay forested. That's, that's unusual in terms of what we get to see come before.
True that. Okay, so then if we have other, any of us have other questions, contact Mr. Myers before it shows up on our agenda. It seems like we're waiting on the previous petition to have some paperwork signed off on. So how do you all feel about putting this on the agenda next week? All right, Mr. Myers, would the petitioner be ready for that?
I believe so. I will communicate that to them.
Okay, if not, then the week after is great.
Okay.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have affordable housing.
Hi, are you ready?
We are. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Yes, yeah, this has been long. So I'm Kathy Crabtree. I'm Chair of the Monroe County Affordable Housing Advisory Commission. I believe one of my fellow commissioners is on, David Henry. I can't tell because of how the setup is.
Let me look and see.
It's there. I saw him.
Yes, that'd be great.
Excellent.
All right, well, I appreciate that. I did want to take the moment to comment that the formatting of this is a little off-putting for folks like in the public, not only people who are like participating because we have no visibility to who else is on the call. So your tech folks might want to look at that and see if there's not a way so that people can at least tell who's on the call. All right, there's my soapbox. So I wanted to say, don't take the absence of the other Affordable Housing Advisory Commissioners as lack of interest. We weren't able to come up with the evening or weekend time that the county commissioners were available. But it does allow the opportunity to also highlight that meetings in the middle of the day are a challenge for folks who work. So I just wanted to mention that for consideration for your meetings. Having said all that, I really appreciate you guys taking the time to meet with us. Last week, we had a lively and good discussion, I think. And based on Commissioner Jones' request, I resent to you some recommendations that we provided to you in October of 2019, as well as some, and that was just general. As well as some, and that was just general recommendations, some ideas for consideration for the county commissioners to help facilitate affordable housing. And then I also forwarded what we called a wish list for the county development ordinance. And I believe today we were just going to look at those and maybe discuss what's within the realm of possibility. And whether it fits within the county commissioner's vision for affordable housing. And then if there's more information, we can get to you to help facilitate implementing. I wanted to focus on what is possible. Within your purview, not other issues such as wages that we have no, nothing, no control over. So anyway, with that, thank you so much, and I will let you take it away. And I don't know how you wanted to do this. If you wanted me to just step through them, I wanted to know what you all's desire was and how this should go.
Colleagues.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful to just go through them one by one.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to do that. I've got them here in front of me. So one of the ideas, which is really timely, given Ms. Petroline's mention of fire safety. The first list or the first item on our list was a rental inspection program for the county. That currently doesn't exist. Fire safety is just one piece of it, but as I said, that was a good segue. As everyone knows, in January of two thousand and nineteen, in Van Buren Park neighborhood, you know, we did have a death in a county rental home. So I mean, this is, that's been a couple of years, but we don't want to lose sight that this is an issue. So.
May I correct the record?
Yes.
Because we, we all thought it was a rental home. It was actually a contract. It was a land contract home. It was for sale by contract.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, yeah. But regardless, so anyway, the reason we wanted a rental inspection program. It would require property owners of any dwelling unit, rooming house, or rooming unit that were occupied by persons other than the owner or their dependents to register with the Monroe County Planning Department. We wanted to require, create an ordinance that requires registration and inspection, and I won't go into all of the details. But we did have a way of proposed funding it. Funds could be set aside to start the program and train folks. And then those inspectors could charge the landlord for the inspection and then provide documentation that they had passed. So and then fines could be used for folks who didn't meet it. So we did, you know, provide a funding source for that. So I guess that's the first one. I don't know if you want to talk about each one or you want me to go through all of them first.
I would just go through them and then we can, we can come back with questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then the second recommendation was an owner occupied rehabilitation program. And this would be a program to help low to moderate income households make needed repairs, accessibility modifications, or real rehabilitation to owner occupied homes. This program would address a gap in services in the two mile fringe area. One suggestion was that the county could possibly contract with SCAP or provide services to manage the program. And then also a weatherization program. Again, you know, just it could be structured as a zero to low interest loan and/or a grant. There could be a revolving loan program. With an influx of revenue from recording fees that could make the program self-sustaining. Another idea was a down payment and closing cost assistance. Realizing that down payment and the cost upfront to buy a home is a hurdle to homeownership. So just, that was one of our ideas. A land bank. So Indiana Code thirty six dash seven dash thirty eight allows for the development of a land bank to improve the marketability of distressed real, real property. So that was another idea that we thought the county might consider. The next one is a landlord risk mitigation fund. What this would do, it's sometimes called a risk mitigation pool or landlord guarantee funds. But it provides assistance to landlords that might be concerned about the risk of renting to folks that, that their concern might not be able to, you know, make the payments. So it really allows folks who otherwise can't get housing to get housing, but then reduces the risk to the landlords. And then we've got details. Set forth for that as well. And then, so that was the, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought someone said something. That was the end of our initial recommendations. And then as far as the county development ordinance. This is a little bit long, but let me just go through some of the recommendations. This is more background. I don't want to read all that. Okay, so for consideration, we had a few policies. I'm not going to read all of the background information. One was overlay zones. And what that means is examining the potential of incentivized affordable housing overlay zones to facilitate the provision of affordable housing units through the retention and rehabilitation of existing affordable units. Or the construction of new affordable units. What overlay zones do is they establish additional standards and regulations to specific areas in addition to the requirements of the base zoning. What this might look like and how affordable housing overlay zones work. It could assist both the public and private sector in making the provision of affordable units economically viable. And it would also provide a means of directing and simplifying the process for creating and maintaining affordable housing. The next policy was form-based code. And we were asking the county plan commission and the commissioner, county commissioners to consider the applicability of form-based codes. They would establish, establish regulations for the physical structure and form of a building rather than the specific use. And the way counties can use form-based code is to encourage mixed income communities. Since it can allow developers to build higher density units. Next to lower density ones. For example, a neighborhood zone with form-based code could have a mix of single-family homes, duplexes, and fourplexes and still look uniform. We wanted you to consider tiny homes as an option, and we could provide more information on that than we did. But tiny homes is something that's being looked at across the country right now. ADUs are accessory dwelling units. Those have worked in the city. I know the county is not the city, but it's something that county residents might be interested in too. If they want to have folks living on their property with them. And they could be established neighborhoods with sanitary sewer as well as undeveloped or underdeveloped sites in urbanizing areas. Use of regulatory authority. Use the authority over the creation of subdivisions, density regulations, and timing of development to foster affordable housing development. This could be done by providing density bonuses to incentivize developers. We know the state restricts us from requiring things, but you do have a lot of options regarding incentivizing. Allow for smaller subdivisions or reduce setback. So that those who prefer to purchase less land with a home can do so. Eliminate parking minimums. This would lower the construction costs by allowing the market to decide optimal parking. And reviewing zoning codes to ensure that the regulations do not interfere with the buy right production of cooperatively owned housing. We've just got a few more expedited review, streamlined review processes as an incentive for affordable housing. Provide incentives for affordable housing development. Again, you can't require, but you can do things such as fee waivers or tax abatements. Allow housing diversity. Permitting mid-scale housing such as duplexes and townhouses to be built by right in urbanizing areas. So that, and as is currently the norm for single-family homes, so expanding that. Leverage publicly owned land, encourage publicly owned land to be used for affordable housing. Offer publicly owned land via request for proposals. And then fair housing in the CDO, zoning policies such as the large minimum lot requirements. Minimum multifamily zoning and age restricted zoning may restrict and limit the ability for lower income families and families of color for moving into certain neighborhoods and suburbs. So we ask that you consider that. And I know that was a lot, but and I don't think we'll be able to get through everything today. But I really appreciate the time to highlight this and to find out what more we can provide to you to help move this forward. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I will say that the CDO is form-based. And that, that's the proposed development and also that the county currently does allow for both detached and attached accessory dwelling units. We currently have that in our. In our statute. So that is an option already, which is great.
And those are by right or those require waivers?
Conditional mainly because, which means it just has to be reviewed before it's approved.
Okay, but single-family homing, homes are not conditional, correct?
Right.
Okay, yeah, so we'd like to see that changed, but.
Yeah, well, and the issue typically has to do with. Access to things like septic and, you know, those kinds of things. It's not an arduous process by any stretch of the imagination, so. So yeah, I do appreciate all the information. I know for me, one of the things that I would like to see is, and I could just say this off the cuff, and I think we're going to take what you've offered under advisement and come back with some, something. More substantive for you, but I know that once we get into the CDO and we actually have modules to review, draft modules to review, that, that would be an opportune time to be, be looking at that information. That's going to be a really important thing, I think. We'll see what my colleagues have to say. Commissioner Jones, anything to add?
Well, I just want to point out that this kind of dovetails with some other major efforts that we're involved in right now. It may not seem terribly obvious, but the criminal justice reform study actually. Recommends that we look at various kinds of housing. Try to make sure that there is housing available for people who are coming out of jail. Of course, try to find housing for homeless people who are much more likely to end up in jail. And I realize that you're concerned about a full spectrum. But right at this moment, this is the part that the county is really. Really focusing on because this is a rather major problem that we need to fix. So, so yeah, we will be, we'll be working with a variety of people and attempting to create in particular more transitional housing. Actually, I, there's one thing I would like to mention that seems to happen rather frequently. I think especially with the, with large apartment buildings and multifamily housing. There's often a requirement that people have no criminal background at all. Which I can understand why they would require that, but. When people come out of jail, they do need to be able to go somewhere. And this is, I, this is something that really concerns me. I don't think that we have any authority over it. It would be a matter of persuading developers to not do that, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Commissioner Givens?
Yeah, but what Commissioner Jones just said, oftentimes it's a matter of what landlords will accept, not the developers even. So in terms of getting people in. We also, we are, I know that this won't, doesn't satisfy some of the questions that you've raised and the issues you've raised. But we are working with United Way on their heading home program. We're actively involved in, in helping to fund some of that. We're part of sort of the interview process for their new director for that. So we, we are, we're trying to attack this on multiple fronts, I guess is what I would say. But this, what you've presented is very well thought out, extremely well thought out.
Yeah, I, I thank all the commissioners for that. And Kathy, thanks for letting me, reminding me about the meeting today so I could pop in. I would, I would just, I appreciate all those comments. I think as a, as a commission member, you know, one thing that jumps out at me is that. You know, the intersectionality that Commissioner Jones just described of criminal justice and housing and those activities. Requires us to walk and chew them at the same time on those issues, right? And so it's not sequential. It's kind of all at once. What's unique about what I think some of the things that Kathy brought from the commission to your consideration is that some of this is shovel ready for ARPA funding. There's a, as the county sits on the thirteen million that needs to be programmed and the rest that's coming. It's worth keeping in mind that some of these ideas, seedbed or shovel-ready ideas could be put to work to, to think about that full, not only that full continuum, but those first few rungs that people are trying to get on it for affordability. So I would just keep that in the back of our minds that, you know, I, I wish everything could be sequential, but some of these things have to be all conducted in that, that in mind. And so Penny, your comment, or sorry, Commissioner Givens, to your comment about the, the work of the United Way. I mean, because of their findings that we know that, you know, nearly fifty percent of our county rents is in a housing unstable issue with thirty percent of their income going to that rent. There's urgency there too. But again, thank you for your time today.
Well, and I, I do want to say too, that through all the COVID stuff that we've all been faced with. We have, we've made money available to the township trustees through their township assistance program to keep people housed and, and to keep the utilities turned on. And the, the money that we funneled through both the CARES Act and through the food and beverage tax money that were grants to people. Kept businesses going and kept people employed. And again, we all, you know, one of the things that Ms. Crabtree said early on is we don't have any control over wages, but in this instance, we helped ensure that people maintained their jobs. And, and I'm not trying to pat myself on the back or pat us all on the back, but there are so many pieces that go into this very complicated kind of situation.
Yeah. And, and I'm excited to think about what the United Ways Group is proposing. Because it does include some down payment and landlord assurance assistance. And that's part, that's part of the recommendation that we're putting together for the council for the, some of the ARPA money to help with that, with that fund itself. It would cover the whole county, including the city, so it's pretty exciting.
And yeah, I was a member of the heading home plan to, the group that created that. And yeah, I, I pointed out last week that many of the recommendations dovetail right in with the recommendations that we've got here from the Affordable Housing Commission. So that's great. Like David said, you know, there is this money that's available. Several of our proposals just need a little seed money and then they're sustaining. So that would be a great opportunity to consider. I did want to say about the CDO, so of course we are following and participating in, in those meetings. I do think that there's an opportunity and why we submitted those recommendations to the plan commission. I feel like groups such as the Affordable Housing Advisory Commission should have more than just a two-minute public comment after the proposal comes out. So I really encourage the county commissioners to get the planning department and the plan commission to look at our recommendations so that it's not just a matter of like, yeah, purple or unit three is out now. It, it's too late to have any major impact. So that was why we wanted to elevate it and say, you know, please get them to at least consider them as it's being developed.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And in fact, module two, two isn't even out yet. Module one is administrative, which is just, you know, it doesn't really impact anything except how we function. Module two isn't even out yet, and they've already gone out for public comment before the module's even done. To try to get that pre-input, as it were. And that's a good way to operate, and that's how we're going to operate. But I think. I think that there is. You know, there could be some, yes, input along the way, but also, once it's done, if it's not, if there's an issue, we need to know about it. And that can be done in writing. It doesn't have to be two minutes. It can be done in writing and also presented. It's because there's going to be multiple hearings, both with the plan commission. There'll probably be a dual hearing with the commissioners and the plan commission together. And then there will be the commissioners who have to hear this, the board commissioners. So there's going to be a ton of opportunity and we'll need that kind of information all along the way because something may be addressed, something might not be addressed enough or inadequately addressed, you know, where we think, well, we've done that. We heard from that, from that group. Okay, we've done that, but maybe it's not going to work and we need, we need our eyes open to that. So we appreciate that insight and we're going to keep, need to keep hearing for that insight. So we appreciate that. So the rest we'll take under advisement. And again, we appreciate your patience. We appreciate your service to the county. Really do appreciate that. And we will be in touch very soon.
Great. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next we have Monroe County Clerk.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. Once again, I'm hopeful to keep my comments short as I know there will be an upcoming meeting between our offices. In preparation for that meeting, I've had the opportunity to go back and review the board's presentations to the election board as well as my own presentation at the weekly work sessions. I wanted to not only address where I believe we are, but to request a point of clarification from a statement made during your presentation to the, at the September Election Board Meeting. As I stated last week, I do consider these discussions to be productive, invaluable and invaluable to interested and impacted members of the community. The meetings are open to the public and their recordings will serve as a historical backdrop for future discussions, whether for myself or future Monroe County clerks as they relate to election space needs. Voters, office holders, the media, and the public will have a historical memorialization of each of our perspectives. With respect to negotiations, I can't say that I can tell if this is the new ceiling or the new floor when it comes to requesting adequate and additional space from the Board of Commissioners. One thing is certain, however, history will prove one of us to be on the wrong side of this space issue. I stand strong in my continued belief that all things election belong under one roof. And in Monroe County, all election space should be under the roof of the Johnson Hardware Building. The long and short of it is that prior to the Johnson Hardware location, Monroe County voters had been accustomed to voting at the Curry Building until the space allocated to the previous Monroe County clerk was relocated to its current location. As previously mentioned, they are currently registered Monroe County voters who truly believe that they last voted in the Curry Building. For that reason and others, as the administrator of elections in Monroe County, I have significant concerns regarding voter confusion. In the board's presentation to the election board, Commissioner Thomas said, and this is a direct quote, "We know it is not ideal to ask people to go to different voting locations. Voters are used to getting told to go to different voting locations. Voters adapt." On Election Day, I am on the receiving end of a large volume of calls from voters who either do not know where their correct voting location is or have gotten to what they believed was their correct polling location only to learn that they are at the wrong polling location. When does this typically happen? At five-thirty or five-forty-five when the polls are set to close at six o'clock. Voters often then choose to vote provisionally if they don't believe they can make it to their appropriate polling location. Those provisional ballots are reconciled by the election board ten days following the election. And regrettably, ballots cast at the wrong polling site cannot be accepted into the final vote totals. In short, those votes are not counted. I believe that early and absentee voting at Election Central to the best extent possible helps to mitigate this confusion. Election Central at the Johnson Hardware Building is the new normal. It is also as close to a vote center as Monroe County has at this time. It is my belief that moving voters yet again, twice in a less than ten-year time span, would lend to voter confusion, which does indeed lend to undesirable optics for voting in Monroe County. This leaves me with no option but to continue to push for more space at Election Central. Peace meal options. Some voting equipment in one place, other voting equipment in another place, a basement here, a storage unit there. This is not optimal and does not serve the best interests of the voters with respect to election security and integrity. I also believe it opens Monroe County up to liability in the event of a recount. You've not only received feedback from my clerk siblings with respect to best practices, but my election board colleague, Professor Rana, summed it up nicely when she stated, "I don't think we should rely on examples where things are in different buildings when we know for a fact that that increases security and ballot integrity concerns. It offers more options to bad actors with respect to the movement of the ballots." My takeaway from your presentation at the September Election Board Meeting was, "You don't need what you think you need. You need what we think you need." I know that you are incredibly proud of your acquisition of the NAPA Building, and it might certainly be a coup for another Monroe County government office. As I stated last week, while I don't see it as a good fit for my office on a permanent basis, I could keep an open mind regarding its temporary use for purposes other than early and absentee voting in 2022. I have concerns that it's not only located at one of the most congested intersections in Monroe County. I have concerns about my ability to maintain control of the mandated fifty-foot chute, concerns about the proximity to the bus depot, concerns about the proximity to the recently flooded fire station, which is still not in use. And most importantly, however, I have concerns for the safety of the voters, candidates, and bystanders during early voting season at that location. As a point of clarification, I would like to ask the board to expound on a statement made twice during your presentation to the election board in September. On the PowerPoint and reiterated by Commissioner Thomas, it was noted that community corrections would not be moving at this time. My hope is that this statement offers a window of hope that there is a path to the idea of Election Central expanding to the entirety of the Johnson Hardware Building at some point in the not-too-distant future. Knowing that it wouldn't be possible to just wake up one day and have the entire building, this is actually the compromise for which I was hoping when I began presenting at the Commissioners' Work Session back in August. In closing, I am ever mindful of the incredible talents of my team. We have become incredibly adept at making things work, and therein lies the problem. As we prepare to meet for discussions, I want to be honest about a significance concern because we are so good at making it work. My concern is that the commissioners are going to force us to continue making it work with little to no consideration for best practices. I've come to every work session and will come to the work meeting in good faith, but I am asking the commissioners to keep a path to best practices in mind as you prepare to meet for those discussions in consideration of my space request. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Brown. We appreciate you. Any questions, my colleagues?
May I make a couple of comments?
Sure. I think we're at that point at the end of the meeting where we can, we can hear comments from the board. Please.
I just wanted to follow up with what Clerk Brown said. And I appreciate her coming and talking to us. At this point, we, we really don't have a plan, but we have also listened to the other clerks that she has invited to come and speak before us. And uniformly, I think, if I remember right, there've been five of them, they all use vote centers. And certainly people appearing at the wrong polling place, any problem that would come out of that would just be eliminated by the use of vote centers, which is something that we, we've been talking about. And I guess I'm a little taken aback by Clerk Brown's statement that history will prove one of us wrong. I think we're trying to work together so that nobody is on the wrong side of history with this because we want free and fair elections for the residents of Monroe County. We're really encouraged that we have a meeting set up next Monday at 2:00 PM between the Board of Commissioners and the election board so that we can start to work on these things amicably, hopefully. And again, so that no one here lands on the wrong side of history. So, thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just say that not all of those counties were vote center counties. The ones that you asked when they appeared on the meeting were vote center counties, but not all of them were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we're at that point in the meeting where we've come to the end. I don't know if Commissioner Jones does anything else she wants to add. We have a full agenda and we've got a three o'clock meeting, so.
Yeah, I, I need a bit of time before the three o'clock meeting and then I have another five-thirty meeting. So I would appreciate a little bit of a break in the meetings today.
All right, yeah, it'd be good. All right, unless there's anything else, we are going to be adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be well and get vaccinated.